It means the same thing.
Year and a half ago?
Well, this, this time it really wasn't. There was one, one good speech. It was excellent at the previous, the previous.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Mammell City Council to order. First order of a business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'm gonna lead us in that tonight.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community on which we serve, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the citizens throughout our country that are suffering through ice storms and power outages, Lord, and ask you to be with them and be with the workers that are working to restore their power and keep them safe, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our leaders here tonight as we make decisions, Lord. We'd ask you to give us wisdom and help us to make wise decisions and that we serve our citizens that, the way that you would have us serve them, Lord. And as we leave here tonight, Lord, we'd ask you to go with us and help us to be an inspiration to those around us and reach out to our fellow man. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is special guests and announcements, and we have none of those. Uh, next, next item is the approval of the minutes of the January third regular meeting. The council members have a copy of those minutes in their packet.
Motion to approve? Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. Uh, and we have one comment card tonight, and it's going to be on item nine twenty-two, ordinance number nine twenty-two, so we'll hear from that individual at that time. Next item is a financial statement review. We normally do that at the second meeting of each month because of trying to get all the, uh, health benefits and changes that were made at years end after January first to get all that ready for the first payroll we had to do and everything, and because there was only seven working days until the agenda went out. Uh, we will have the, uh, financial review for December, the first meeting in February. And there was also, we always have to make some year-end changes anyway. We're gonna try to get as many of those made on that, uh, financial report, uh, and get as many bills paid as possible so that it reflects more closely what, uh, the financial will look like at the final one in the end of the year. Next item is procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So I move.
Second.
Have a motion second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the second reading of ordinance number nine twenty-two amending sign regulations. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine twenty-two, and ordinance amending the City of Mammell sign regulations.
Okay, um, this was on first reading. There were several questions at the last meeting by the alderman, uh, Ms. Scott, uh, no. Ms. Coney is in the audience, uh, to, and she was the chairman of the sign committee, so she's here to answer any questions, but we do have a, uh, public comment card if y'all would like to hear that at this time.
Yes.
Uh, at this time, if Mr. Mike Chastain would come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Chastain.
Mike Chastain, one three five Fontainebleau, Mayor Council. As a representative of the Country Club of Arkansas Property Owners Association, after reading section nine of the proposed ordinance, we have concerns regarding the grandfathered status for existing signs because in section nine, first line, it says subdivision signs shall be erected. There are a number of signs, including an RPOA, that have been erected. At the time they were, they met all applicable planning commission requirements and were approved by the council. And in the case of quite a few of these signs, we're talking a fairly substantial amount of money. Under the understanding I have of this ordinance, they would not comply. And I mean, the real world is, do we take a saw to them and start over? Now you've got fourteen hundred homes paying dues that would have a real problem with that. So we would respectfully request that this ordinance be amended to include a grandfathered clause.
Are there any questions for Mr. Chastain? I guess the question would be, a grandfather clause, only is there as long as that sign is there? And I know that that sign, the entrance sign got hit one time by a car, so then the question would be, could it be restored back at the same size?
Well, I would clarify that all repairs to this date have been what we would consider cosmetic. We haven't had one of those take out the whole sign type of accidents. I've been, could have happened in the past.
It did happen in the past.
Okay.
The developers replaced it. Yeah, it got completely taken out.
I don't know. Let me get some clarification. How many signs we have in our neighborhood, guys? Five? Five major signs. Either one, size of one plywood sheet, that's gonna be a somewhat big modification for our POA.
Right. Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
Thirty-two is a big modification. You mean, is that too small or too big?
Ours are considerably bigger than that. There was, there's also issues with lighting. We have one particular sign that is lit by a streetlight. Would that be considered lit? Cause we'd have to take a streetlight out to unlight it. Then it would be dark, cause it would no longer be lit.
No, I believe there's a definition of illumination, and it's talking about a sign shining direct, or light signing directly on a sign, I believe, if I remember that.
We read that, and it just says shall be illuminated, and that's not, we think we understand, but, you know.
E.
Right.
Sign only upon the sign of the property within the premises, so a, a, a streetlight's gonna cover more than that.
Good. So we wouldn't be under an onus to have to deal with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could to.
Go ahead.
The intent, which doesn't always necessarily match up to what the product was supposed to be, uh, was never to have anyone go back and remove something like a subdivision sign. As I recall the conversation, what I've been frantically trying to do in the last couple of minutes is see if there is a grandfather clause in here. And one of the confusing things about this ordinance is it may not be in this ordinance, but it might be part of the code that was not repealed, uh, elsewhere.
We also had a, just more of a clarification question. Where in the state do we fall as a municipality trying our best to comply with the current rules? Would we be like trailblazing in this regard, or are there other municipalities that have had to deal with this, and how did they do it, and?
So the, the general question is, this is a process that cities are going through. We're not at the forefront, forefront, and we're not at the end. I'd like to say we're toward the front of those cities trying to, uh, remove unconstitutional provisions in their code. One of the elements that we talked about, uh, at the last meeting was that we, we tried to go generic in, in some senses with the anticipation that inevitably these cases are gonna be litigated, and we didn't wanna be so far at the front that we were the city being sued, though that happens anyways. Um, the, the idea was to be pretty generic, pretty, um, uh, pro-speech. In, in other words, we've, we've given, you know, we, we've gone broader as opposed to more narrow in a lot of cases. I don't know if that answers your question, or if I'm even hitting it. And I'm still trying to look up the, the grandfathering provision to see if that's.
For purposes of clarification, we would prefer that if the council does approve this in some form, that in section nine, that grandfather clause be clearly stated. That would clarify.
Alright. I'll let the city attorney keep looking. Uh, Alderman Anderson, did you have a question?
You kind of answered it. I, I was thinking that if, if, if the, um, signs were damaged in such a way that, you know, structural damage, you were gonna have to rebuild it anyway. So I would think that, uh, you would build it back to the code that we have currently now. I don't think it would put on the undue burden.
If foundation, and this could be language that you might consider, if, if foundation restoration is, is involved in a, in a sign repair, then that would probably qualify as a replacement.
Right.
But if it's non-fondational, cause our signs are drive it.
Right.
Which can be repaired pretty.
Yeah, I would consider that cosmetic.
Sure.
But if they'd like, like the mayor said, it was taken out.
Right, if the foundation's involved, then I think we wouldn't have an issue.
Have to rebuild the whole thing.
Yeah. If they're digging dirt.
Yeah.
To, to pour new concrete.
Right. Then we would do it to the same.
You guys could, you know, maybe, but that grandfathering issue would be very clear for us.
Oh, I'm totally in support of the grandfather issue. I mean, I, I think that's what we were, what this exercise is, is for, is to try to weed out some of the things, concerns.
Super.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Alderman Mosley, did you have another question?
Let, let, go, you go ahead and ask yours first, and I'll, I'll mention what I had to say.
Just as a matter of clarification, I think I saw that they, you had, you're talking about five different signs?
Yes, sir.
Now, are all, are all of these signs either subdivision signs or Country Club of Arkansas signs?
They're all entrance. So, you know, our Country Club of Arkansas POA was in phases.
Yeah.
They're all considered entrance signs to a particular phase.
Okay. Okay. Well, then I'm, and that wouldn't be a content-based sign in any way, shape, or form, would it, Mr. City Attorney? I mean, subdivision signs.
It's, it's not a temporary sign. Um, but that was one of the issues that we discussed. In, why do you ask, Alderman Saunders?
As a matter of information for everybody.
Okay. Is a subdivision sign content-based? Let's look at the definition.
In the eyes of the Supreme Court.
I can't speak for that.
Can't go down that road.
What kind of question was that?
I'm getting in trouble here.
Frantically. Let's go frantically ask the Supreme Court.
One of the, and we're, we're kind of laughing. One of the, the justices, when this case passed, said this is gonna create so much litigation that the Supreme Court should just be renamed the United States Supreme Court of Sign Appeals in the future. And that was in, that was in the order because of some of the, the questions that are being asked today.
I'll go ahead and make a comment while he's looking that up. I, I thank you for coming in front of us and, and asking these questions. It doesn't make any difference whether it's the first reading or the last reading. Come forth. We need, this, this is an important ordinance. It, it has a lot to do with freedom of speech and freedom of expression, and, and we need to do the best we can on it. And I'm kinda like you. I'm not sure we really need to be, uh, hammering away and feeling a need to really put something in place until we've seen how some other folks get theirs done. That's some questions I've gotten from constituents here today, and, uh, I'll ask, I'll ask those when we get ready for some more here, but, um, thanks for, thanks for coming in.
Absolutely. Well, our feeling is precedent is a powerful teacher. Let somebody else work out the kinks.
Yeah.
And.
Well, I don't have a problem with grandfathering, you know, as long as we can still handle this.
Without content.
Without.
Absolutely. And my, my suggestion would be as long as it's not a non-fondational repair, then it's considered a repair.
I could agree to that.
And as, as the council and the mayor are well familiar, our POA is quite keenly aware of the distinction between freedom of speech regarding signage and informational signage.
Oh, we remember.
Yes, so. Counsel, is that?
I've got more lights on. I'm not sure. Alderman Holt, is there a question for Mr. Chastain?
While we're talking about POA here, which I totally understand and appreciate and agree with, and will vote for that grandfathering, I live in a neighborhood that doesn't have a POA. So where do we draw the line as to which signs are qualified under grandfathering and which do not? I have at one part of, uh, Rolling Oaks, it says Rolling Oaks off of Mammell Boulevard. And so, at any rate, how do we compare that, or where do we stop the line of everybody, everybody's grandfather, cause they're already there, so the whole world's grandfathered.
This is a subdivision sign, not a POA sign.
Alright, well then.
And so there are.
If it's a subdivision, it's, it can be grandfathered, but if it isn't subdivision, then it can't be grandfathered, is it?
Well, if it's a subdivision sign, that's what this section is talking about. Section nine is talking about subdivision signs.
Okay.
I'm, I'm here representing the POA because it is a subdivision.
Right.
Composed of multiple phases that happens to be a POA, but it could very easily be a subdivision without a POA structure in place.
The POA maintains.
So strictly residential subdivision signs, has nothing to do with POA or not being a POA.
Okay.
So there are, there are signs in Rolling Oaks and Edge Water.
Edge Water, yeah.
Plenty of places.
Heights and et cetera.
Right.
Meadow Ridge, you know, whatever.
Right, right. Those all fall under sub, residential subdivision signs.
So they, they qualify, is it, you're telling me that is a, a grandfathered?
Well, if, if the, if the code is changed to add grandfathering in, yes, all those would be grandfathered in if they needed to be. Now, not all of them are larger than thirty-two square feet.
I was just wondering as a comparison of the two, so I understand. No, no big deal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, these are signs or identities for neighborhoods. I'm not in favor of changing that, limiting it. I think we need to change our language to expand the square footage for, that if they wanna replace it with a like sign, similar design, I think we need to amend the language. We're boxing ourselves in with this thirty-two square foot rule. So I think we oughta, you know, consider a cardinal change because every, every subdivision in Mammell has some form of signage. And they're all different.
Not very many of them are. You look at Diamond Point, things like that, that's a big sign.
Yeah, it is. It's not thirty-two square feet.
And so what happens to the new ones over there off of Naylor?
They all get smaller.
Yeah, they'll get smaller and smaller.
So I'm not, I'm not in favor of this ordinance as it's written in, in regard to subdivision signs. You brought up a great point, and I think, I think we need to look at it very hard.
Do we limit the new ones, or do we open it up for everybody? We put a sixty-four square foot sign. I mean, what's, what's your suggestion?
Well, you probably got some of that, they're that size now.
Sure, sure.
I think we would go with the max one that's there now and start looking at that. You know.
Because, you know, for the most part, all those signs are tasteful.
Yes.
And they're, they're well-constructed. And, you know, I didn't realize we're falling into this trap where we're gonna regulate that away. Because that's an identity for these neighborhoods.
Mammell Valley Estates, and things like that, so. So we, we should measure?
Can we go with the max one that's there, that, you know, let's say whatever neighborhood has the biggest one.
Assuming we can track that down.
Yeah, don't get any bigger than that.
Well, at some point, we're gonna have an entrance sign out here from Mammell. Is it gonna be a four-by-eight sheet of plywood, or are we gonna put something that's more appropriate to our city? That's, that's my point.
I would say that wasn't.
That's not a subdivision sign.
Sit down when you guys are done with it.
Sorry, Mr. Chastain.
The, the question is, though, is what do you call on a sign? Because y'all mentioned Diamond Point. Diamond Point is two big walls, and the only part of the sign is the lettering part. It's just how we address it well in a commercial-type building. It may be on their wall, but the sign area is not the entire wall that's there. So, so I think you need to be very careful if you just go out there and measure the size of those walls and say, yeah, you can put that in a subdivision, cause it may, then you may impact the, the view from a house or something like that. And then you gotta be careful if you start doing that, and I don't know, I hadn't looked at it to see. What if, is it height-wise too? I mean, are they gonna be unlimited height, you know?
That's my point, Mayor, is maybe our language here needs to be cleaned up to allow for existing structures to remain intact in the identity of a subdivision.
If I may, what I'm, what, here's how I see the result of this conversation. I'm trying to gather what y'all want so that by the next time we come in, I could have drafted a particular provision unless the council thinks there's a better way of doing that. So right now, I'm hearing two different themes with regard to the, um, subdivision signs. One theme is allow a grandfather clause. The other theme is to expand the square footage of all signs up to the maximum of our largest sign currently. Is there a consensus with how the?
Definition needs to encompass the fact that it's made of a wall.
Well, the, only the, the display surface is what is restricted, not the entire monument. The display surface would be the, the portion of the, um, sign that's more signage and not the other stuff, but.
Make that determination, that's my point.
And you get into, are we talking about just the letters themselves? What are we talking about?
Exactly, yeah.
So.
You can have sixty-fourth six-inch letters, you can have thirty-two set twelve-inch letters.
Well, not, not the size of the lettering, but the display surface of a sign.
Correct.
If, if this was the.
If it's the side of a building.
Well, we have different sign rules for signs on the side of a building. Uh, but for subdivision signs, what you're looking at, and so you go down and you see one of the subdivision signs that has brick pillars on the side, uh, and then it, the pillars hold up a display surface, which is the portion of the sign upon which the subdivision name is. That counts as the display surface. But, so going back to the, the issue is, am I hearing a consensus to expand the thirty-two square feet per subdivision sign to the size of the largest subdivision sign that we currently have?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Todd. I hit my button.
John Todd, one forty-five Orleans. To make it more complicated, instead of grandfathered, leave your thirty-two square feet for new construction, and then perhaps put some wording in there that you replace an existing sign that existed before the ordinance to the square, same square footage. Same design. Cause our entrance sign between Regions and Daves is somewhere around twenty-eight feet long, seven feet tall. It's lit. It's two-sided. We have another sign that's down at the first median, uh, and it's somewhere around thirty-two square feet, but it's lit. Then we have another one down at Village Way, not Village Way, Salon, I think, that's not lit, but it's a big mass of concrete. And it's actually over in their property on a private drive. But if you, instead of saying, you know, seventy-two square feet maximum or whatever, leave your eight by thirty-two, and then put your wording in there to replace an existing sign like it was before it was tore down. Of course, I don't know how to put that legalese in there, but.
If I, are you asking for a grandfathering clause that just, rather than eventually in, in the case of total demolition, requires compliance with the current code, an all-out exemption, if you will, for signs already in place? Is that?
That would be fairly accurate, at least for our subdivision, cause quite frankly, I don't think there's many other subdivisions that has this big monolith that they built and left the POA to maintain inside city property. So, you know, we've got a, a pretty complicated thing right there already.
What I would recommend, though, is also coming up with a definition for what display surface area is. That way, it doesn't include the entire twenty-eight-foot-long wall that's behind it.
Up on the top of it.
Right. So I think, you know, I think we get a definition for the display surface area in there also, so that, I mean, I understand I'm adding to the ordinance, but.
I don't mind adding to it. I just think.
You don't think we can come up with a definition?
So I'm falling into the trap that I've seen other people do, admittedly. I, the, the definition of display surface is the area, the surface that displays things. Right? I see what you're saying, though, and I, I already have written that down, uh, as something, I think.
Well, because it, it's just like the Rolling Oaks sign. The Rolling Oaks sign, the letters are like eleven inches tall, and they're, to do both of them is twenty-three letter, twenty-four letters, I forget. I mean, we just, we were putting, we just purchased the new letters to go on Diamond Point because some of them were stolen, some of them were broke, some of them were faded. Well, you go out and buy one new D, well, it doesn't look like the rest of the letters that are on the wall now. So we're replacing all of them, but the, the, the surface, display surface area is not gonna be anywhere near thirty-two square feet, but it's on a wall that's twenty-foot long or something like that, yeah.
You know, just out of curiosity, if we're, unless we are concerned that someone is gonna build a subdivision and put in a subdivision sign the size of this building, why do we limit it to sixty-four or thirty-two or anything? Why don't we just say for subdivisions, let the builder do, cause they're, they're not gonna build a monster sign.
It's gotta come before y'all, anyway.
Well.
Not the sign?
Not sign.
No sign, no.
So for subdivisions, we could.
Y'all several years ago.
So it's gotta come before us?
Well, no.
Well.
Well, it has to comply with city code.
It has to comply with city code, and then if there's an appeal, it comes to the city council that senses the Board of Sign Appeals, but.
Why, are we scared that they're gonna come in and build one that's, um, a hundred and thirty feet high and six hundred feet long? I, I don't see that happening in subdivision.
You could have someone that wants to put like a big archway over it or something to that effect that you're seeing in some gated communities and things like that. So there is that possibility.
Well, it's never happened yet, so I just, the, in, in this committee, we have tried very hard not to limit things any more than we had to because, because we're being too specific. And I'm wondering if they sit in a good case for subdivision signs to kinda back off of it. If we see that there's a problem coming, then we can amend the ordinance. And that way, we don't have to deal with grandfathering or keeping track of what used to be there, what can be rebuilt.
Once they start building, we can't back it up, though.
And I, I really think it, it begins before they start building. We can't hear that someone's drafted a something to submit to the city and then rush and pass an ordinance. Right? I'd advise against that.
I saw somebody building something. We better pass a law real quick.
Right.
Proactive.
But I think you accurately described the overall theme of the task force, which was to be less restrictive as opposed to more restrictive.
Well, how can we be, be less restrictive with, with subdivision signs? Well, I hate to say sixty-four square feet, because now we're getting into lettering size and the wall that it's mounted on.
Well, we're not. See, I, I don't think we are talking about the wall that it's mounted on. The display service area would not include the wall, as I would see that.
Yeah, but see, we'll have to draft.
I, I can.
For that.
I'll add the, we, we currently use display surface and have for years successfully, but I can re, I can add a definition for display surface in there. I'll just use the one we currently have.
Because it says no more than two signs per entrance, so their signage has both sides, so that's fine. I mean, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that their actual sign itself is larger than thirty-two square foot. I know it's a bunch of letters that are in a, you know, so Country Club of Arkansas could be long enough that it is, but I, you know, so that's why I'd be real careful about just picking a number out of the air, too, saying sixty-four, one-twenty-eight, or whatever. Uh, but I do think you've gotta have something in there, or you will have in, for instance, there's a message board in North of Rock that's huge. It can be seen from Walton Heights, one of the flashing LED electronic signs. Well, you know, the, it's not allowed anymore. I mean, it was at one point in time, but North of Rock doesn't even allow those anymore. In a commercial area, it's in a commercial area, but because they're so bright when you drive by, well, I'm not saying this because it says it can't be illuminated and some other things in here, but I mean, just because they haven't done it before doesn't mean that someone doesn't do something like that.
Currently, our current code for permanent subdivision signs says a display surface area not to exceed twenty-four square feet. So we broadened it from the way it currently sits by fifty percent.
So we need to tear it down anyway, per the.
No, because, because there's, 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 that was never the goal, is to get people to tear anything down.
No, I'm kidding.
But just to let, to, to give some framework for what, if someone were applying right now, they'd be authorized a permanent subdivision sign of up to twenty-four square feet. That's the display surface of an area not to exceed twenty-four square feet.
So if you went to forty-eight, you'd be doubling what. So, if you went to forty-eight, you'd be doubling what current code allowed, and you would be going up by fifty percent above what the proposed ordinance is saying.
So, after all this discussion, if there's any recommendations from the city council, I'll be happy to draft that for y'all's consideration.
Uh, I would still like to see us go to the max display area that we have currently. Uh, I think it's just only fair, uh, you know, there might be situations where there's a sign that's already in place, and then another phase down the road, we would, we would restrict them to a smaller sign, and I don't want that to happen. So, I'm still, I, I, and I thank, uh, Mr. Todd for his suggestion, but I still am more in favor of going to the bigger, uh, or the biggest, our max display area, and use that as our, um, standard. That's, that's my, my two cents. That's my recommendation, thank you.
Okay, I've got a whole bunch of lights on here, and people have been talking about Alderman Vapirzand.
Oh, I, that, I was, cause I wanted to hear from Mr. Todd.
Okay, alright.
And I spoke out of turn.
So, you're do, you, you don't need to speak, you're done, alright. Alderman Mosley?
I did wanna say something here, uh, based on what we're probably gonna do to residential, uh, division signs, making the changes, we'll probably have to go back to the first reading anyway. Perhaps it would be better to, to address the details of these changes, maybe by sending it back to the committee and letting them, uh, or, or is it better to try to hash it out here?
I would strongly encourage, if we send it back to the committee, that folks attend the committee meetings so that we don't go through the work of coming to conclusions, to having them reassessed.
Need to be the folks that have-
Whoever, the, you know, the, the more people who participate early on, the easier it is than going through something and then coming back at the end. It's better to get it right than to rush something through that's wrong. But, so, so if, if there's gonna be a, a recommendation to send it back to the council because someone has particular concerns, I'd just request that that person, uh, attend the meetings and, and help us get it the way they want.
This, this process has been good, cause it's flushing these things out. I mean, we were forced to do this, is what's happened, so, we've had people show up that-
Absolutely.
Is, is that it? Okay. Alderman Williams?
So, if we went with, uh, Alderman Anderson's suggestion, would the grandfather clause even be necessary?
There, there probably should be a grandfather clause anyways. Even if it's not limited just to subdivision signs, but there are other signs. Uh, and the way that we were currently thinking of that is that, and it slipped, there was an oversight, it probably should've been included here, but m- more i- with commercial signs, because that's where I think of most of the, the permanent signs are in the commercial section, which will be sort of phase two of the sign ordinance. Um, so I, I think a grandfather clause would be prudent anyways.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council, one of the things that I might bring up too, if you guys are gonna do all this heavy lifting, if you look at section, I guess, no, subsection eight, the subdivision sign issue about acceptable sign maintenance, you might wanna flesh that out a little bit, because from a P O A perspective or a subdivision perspective, that's an agreement between whom and whom. And ob- obviously, the enforcement authorities with the city to come rip it out if it gets all ratty looking. But we're just trying to think of this from our perspective as a P O A. That agreement is gonna be signed by us, we're assuming, and it would bind us as a P O A to, who's it with? I mean, agreements are typically two sides. We are certifying to the city that we're gonna keep the thing from getting ratty?
Yeah.
And at what point do you determine its rattiness?
Yeah.
When code enforcement determines it is.
I guess so.
Well, so, the, one of the problems that we have had in the past, uh, and y'all are almost an exception because y'all are an active P O A that maintains its property in great condition. Um, we, we end up with subdivision signs that are in common areas that no one claims ownership to. And then the issue has arisen, well, who's supposed to maintain this? In, in one case, I think it's actually on a private, private law, and so-
Who would the agreement be with in that circumstance?
Whoever was applying for the, the sign ordinance.
Usually, it's the developer that puts the sign in.
Right.
And then it says, or his assigned, so y'all are probably his assigned. So, you may already have agreed to something that you don't-
Well, we have some stipulations in our bills of assurance. I'm just considering in the future, sa- say that sign that you mentioned gets taken out. It's on private ground or whatever. Then at that point, you'd want a new sign approved. Who would the agreement be with? I'm just asking.
City.
Okay, the agreement would be with the city, but would the the subdivision who doesn't have a P O A or-
Whoever's, whoever's putting it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the, the theory is that we've had these, who owns the sign situations arise, and the goal is to say, either, you can dedicate it to the city and the city will maintain it in these certain circumstances, but if you're saying that isn't gonna be the case, and you wanna maintain it, you have to let us know who's supposed to maintain it in ten years, so that we know who to, if, if a car does hit it, we know who to go up and say, hey, you've gotta fix this sign.
Okay.
And, and probably should be added in here is that this isn't designed to create any agreements for signs that are already existing.
Right, well, if the grandfathering language is adopted, then that would take care of those existing signs.
Yeah, but if you-
Thank you.
If you read subsection seven above it, it talks about what happens if the city takes it over. The developer pays half the cost up fr- or maintenance fee that's determined to be half the cost of the sign. So, I mean, all that's pertaining to the same issues, so, but if the developer doesn't wanna do that, then they can keep it up themselves. Are there any other questions on ordinance number nine twenty-two? Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, I've got, I've got several items here actually. Uh, and I wanted to thank, uh, Marion Scott Coney, uh, for meeting with me for about an hour today here to, to hash through some of the language and figure out what's, uh, what some of it means, cause it's, uh, it was very confusing. What, I don't know if everybody else has done the same thing, but it's very difficult to, to look at the proposed ordinance and then go back and, and sort through what's being retained and not being retained from the old one. And, and sometimes it changes the context of the whole thing if you, if you look at both. And, uh, if you haven't done both, try to do both, especially certain sections, cause, cause a couple of things popped out at us. Uh, for one, I, I was concerned about, uh, whether, whether our ordinance was going to be, uh, providing four Christmas lights and things that are just, you know, basic, uh, decorations and things, because, um, I, it was not, there's nothing like that in the ordinance, nothing identifies it. Ms. Scott was able to, uh, confirm that, uh, that, uh, they fall under the category of temporary signs. Uh, it's item nine. These are signs that do not have a flat display surface and are, are exempt from the illumination and square footage restrictions, and shall not be counted when calculating square footage and so on. So, this, this would allow for Christmas decorations, other decorations, uh, Fourth of July bunting and, and that sort of thing, so. But, we found, we did find something in the old language that served to offset that, and so we're gonna ask to have that deleted. Uh, it would be, uh, item, uh, under fifty-eight dash twenty-five, two and five need to be deleted because they're talking about things that are prohibited under this chapter, and one of them is inflatable signs and tethered balloons. So, all these people that have the inflatable snowman in their front yard, that would've been illegal. And then also, under number five, it says strings of lights are prohibited, not permanently mounted to a rigid background, except, uh, under provisions of this chapter, which there are no provision. So, uh, we're gonna ask that tho- that those two items be stricken because they were, they, uh, basically would prohibit Christmas decoration, Christmas lights and things. So, that makes, that makes me feel a lot better. And I appreciate the content, you, you described the whole process, and I, I like the process, and, and, uh, I, I was worried about some things that perhaps I shouldn't have been worried about. Um, banners, uh, banners are, are prohibited, and I'd, I'd like to see those put back in where we can have banners. Uh, basically, banners were allowed under the old ordinance, and taking them away actually reduces, uh, uh, the ability to exhibit free speech and expression. So, you know, why not have a banner that says welcome home soldier or whatever, you know? It's something that people would put up real quick for celebration or something like that. In fact, I, I was gonna ask, ask the, uh, city attorney, there's some way you could print off all these sections that are being retained from the old one to go with the new one and the, and the, uh, ordinance the next time it's being read. And I guess that's a difficult thing to do.
Uh, I'm sorry, print off all the current code that's going to exist?
And, and it doesn't have to be mixed in with the current stuff. It's just there to where somebody can read through it as you're, as you're reading through the whole thing, because something may jump out at you like that one, that, that negates something in the other. But, uh, I just feel like this is, is, this is an important ordinance, and we need to not be worried about running it through real quick.
Absolutely, I th- I thi- I think we do need to get it correct. In the meantime, we are just not, we, I mean, we, we, we don't have much sign code that we are enforcing, because we have a whole lot of very unconstitutional, uh, code, so.
Let's see, uh, is there, there, there was talk, there's talk back and forth, like, for, for example, under temporary signs, uh, now, where is it? Are, are temporary signs authorized, or do you have to get a permit? That was something that, I kept reading it two ways, uh, cause, cause it talks about authorized signs and this thing, and then it doesn't, and it doesn't mention temporary signs. And it says, any other signs you have to have permit for, as I understand it. Yeah, okay.
So, it, I guess what you're asking is in section-
Yeah, section four says signs are prohibited in all zoning districts unless constructed pursuant to a valid, valid permit or authorized under this ordinance. And, and then it talks about authorized signs in the following section, but it doesn't mention temporary signs as being authorized. And so, does that mean you have to get a permit when you want a temporary sign? So, I, I guess I would like to see temporary signs included under unauthorized.
Under authorized signs?
Right. I've got, I've got one constituent too that's run, uh, run the ordinance by his wife, who's a Realtor, cause she's worried about, uh, being able to stick out little signs around the neighborhood when they're trying to show a house.
If, if you, if they can stick out Realtor signs, people could stick up Satan Lives Next Door signs.
Alright.
It's not by content.
So, you can't, you can't look, you can't look at a certain category of signs.
In other words, just a, a little sign you go stick out by somebody's curb saying something you wanna do down the street or whatever. That's, that should, I guess that's still legal.
Uh, well-
We don't know.
So, I don't-
They, they can't place it on, they can only place temporary signs on their own property.
Okay, so, so what about on, uh, what about on Sundays or the-
Harvest sale signs?
Code enforcement doesn't work Sundays.
Are?
And that, that's the problem when you're not doing content-based, cause we allowed directional signs, is what they used to be called. Well, now the-
Directional signs are the one category of signs we know are absolutely unconstitutional. That was, it was directional signs. That's the one we know is, you cannot have a different category of signs based on directional signage. And then the Supreme Court goes on to tell you a bunch of other things that are probably not good to go, but we know directional signs are not.
That was what started it, huh?
Directional signs are not good to go.
Di- di-
Well, they're not constitutional, according to the Supreme Court.
Content-based restrictions or restrictions based on directional signs is a content-based restriction.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm with you, I'm with you.
So, you either have to allow all ti- you have to look at something broader than directional, such as open house this way, it would have to be something broader than that, and you'd be looking at things like the construction, the hours of placement, that sort of things. And, and then someone would be able to post weird things or personal messages or whatever.
So, she can get with a property owner that lives on that corner, and he can place it there? Because it says temporary signs can only be placed on property owned by the person who's doing it. So, I mean, that's, that's a problem that's created. It's taking away directional signs, technically.
I'll mention that to the, the-
And, and garage sale signs are in that same, same category.
You can't put those out anymore.
Well-
But then again-
Unless the, the, it's their own private property and they've been-
That, yeah, that's the dilemma you're in on all this stuff, see? I mean, we actually were controlling it, we allowed so many of this type of sign and this type, but we can't do that anymore. Now, can we, can we cite somebody for it? I don't know, I mean-
So, here's, uh, so a lot of these conversations came, I mean, these are not things that weren't talked about. Uh, there were clearly an oversight here and there, uh, but a lot of this comes in, in enforcement, not in giving discretion to, in code enforcement officers to just sort of choose what they're going to enforce and not, but what do you do when you drive by a house on the corner and you see a garage sale sign saying there's a, a garage sale down the street? First of all, do you know who put that sign out? You, you can, you can kind of guess or assume that it was the person down the street, but it very well could be someone putting a sign out for their neighbor. So, it's hard to even enforce that. Where it becomes easier to enforce is when they're out on the boulevard or in medians and, um, that sort of stuff. Um, when it's just in someone's yard, it, it might almost be presumptuous to think that it wasn't placed there by the, the owner.
Alright, yeah. But if it's out in the street, obviously, it's illegal.
And if you allow a garage sale sign in the middle of the street, you, you allow me or whomever to go put a sign up that says-
Something terrible.
Can you pigs stink, or, 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 just any random thing. You can put time limits on how long they can be out there.
Our proficiency at wasting time is elevating quickly.
Yes.
There's twenty-four people sitting here, and we're talking about stuff could be done other places.
But this is the only place it can be conducted, it's an open meeting, Alderman Vapirzanders.
I understand that, I understand that.
And I understand that.
I apologize to you, but I, I know I get frustrating sometimes, but, you know, I've, I've gotta say these things, so. But, uh, anyway, the la- the last thing I have had a question about was, uh, the interpretation section that's under the old code. It says, the department responsible for enforcing this chapter is charged with issuance of permits, which I guess would be our code enforcement. Their interpretations will be valid in areas of interpretation vagueness, et cetera. Areas of conflict may be addressed to the mayor for ultimate staff resolution. Does, does, does the code enforcement office really want that much responsibility on an ordinance that has a lot of vagueness in it, or should we just take that out?
And then who would be the person interpreting it?
Has to be assigned somewhere.
If it's, if it's vague, it's, uh, yeah, it's a rough call, but, um, I don't know. Anyway, I'm, I, I'd, I'd list that as something that bothers me, but I wanted to see what some discussion was, if they had any. Anyway, those, those are the things I, and I'll, I'll, I'll write those up better, I've had a rough time getting a handle on them all.
It is, it is a handful. What, and just on that particular one, the, the idea is that a lot of times I, the, folks come and ask my interpretation on it. The problem with that is if I'm the one interpreting it and we get sued, I'm now in a position where I can't represent the city, because the, the person who's going to be at issue as having made the determination was also the attorney, and we're, we just don't wanna end up in situations where we're constantly, uh, having to retain outside counsel.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Okay. There's no other discussion on- Okay. There's no other discussion on ordinance number 922. We'll move on to new business?
Well, do we, do we need the city attorney to modify this?
Well...
Are we gonna take it back to committee?
Well, the, the problem is, is what are we gonna modify it to? Because someone said, "Measure the current size of signs." Well, we can't even go do that till someone goes out and measures that. So, then we're gonna have to bring it back to y'all and say, "Is this too big or is this what you want?" You know, so, and he said the grandfather clause needed to be in there regardless. So, I guess the only question is, what size do you want to put there?
I wonder if we shouldn't postpone the third reading on this thing to give us time to measure and rewrite.
It's obvious we're not ready to vote on this.
Well, it's kind of looking that way.
I see a definition on display surface as well.
Yeah, sure. I'll have to develop that.
Okay, we can have the size measured by the next council meeting, the sizes. We can have that. Now, I'm not gonna say if the city attorney can have the other part.
Well, with the exception of the, the, everything that Alderman Mosley mentioned, I can have the grandfathered subdivision signs, the changing the max display surface, adding some language that the agreement between whoever built the subdivision sign and its ongoing maintenance wasn't designed to apply to existing signs, adding a definition for display surface. That can all be done and then back to first reading next week if that's what y'all want to do. I did hear some discussion about sending it back to committee also. So, how?
Well, and this is back to the original conversation you had is committees messed with it for a year. Why not keep it here? I mean, you're making your changes and then they're gonna still have to take up commercial. If there's something else that needs to be addressed, there's nothing saying they can't amend this or ask for us to amend it and bring it forward again also. Because they're gonna still meet, but I don't know if we want to keep just throwing this back and say, "We didn't like that. Bring us something else," you know, so.
Well, it'd have to be if other councilmen were there and other citizens to participate in it, as the city attorney said.
Well, and that's what the committee is. It, it sounds like, for instance, Alderman Mosley's very interested. If it were to go back to committee, I'd ask that he attended if there's anyone else here who's just really wanting to give a lot of input. It's, it's easy to make minor changes once it gets here, add banners, remove banners, add a grandfathering clause. Don't, if we're talking about fundamental changes, whoever thinks those fundamental changes need to occur probably should participate in the drafting of it to get it to this stage. And so, it's really just up to the council whether you want me to make those changes or however y'all want to do it.
If you leave it here, then you get to get it.
And at this point, it might be easier if there was a motion just so that we had some idea of what's going on.
Alderman Saunders?
Okay, if we can agree, and I, I sense that we as a group have decided to change from 32 feet to something larger than that. If so, if we can find that number, I'd be happy to make a motion and get these changes made. But I don't know what, I can't make a motion because I don't know what size, 48 feet?
You can make a motion for him to make the changes, go back to first reading.
Motion to make the changes. I did want to add one. I was trying to take notes as Alderman Mosley was talking. He mentioned a prohibition we had on banners as a, as a complete category of speech. Was there, was there any input on that as to whether we want to prohibit all sorts of banners or allow them? The reason banners was prohibited is there was an incident and a particular banner that was at issue way back when this thing was going through its earlier drafts. You're okay prohibiting banners?
I, well, let's, let's take a vote. I make a motion, we put banners back in or we direct them to be put back in.
We have a motion to put banners back in the ordinance, to allow banners back in the ordinance. Do I hear a second?
I guess...
Motion fails for lack of a second.
And then if there's a motion to either send it back to the task force or to, for me to...
I agree with the mayor. We need to just keep it here.
I make a motion that you make the changes.
A motion, second, that city attorney make the changes that have been discussed tonight. And we may, as far as the size, we may bring you three options or something like that.
Okay.
How about that?
Okay, then I'll second that.
Okay. So, it's been motion, second, that the city attorney make the changes that have been suggested tonight and this ordinance be back on first reading at the next meeting. Is there a discussion on that? And if you want, I mean, we can give you the specifics if you want the ones we discussed. Other, Alderman Mosley?
I guess I'm not sure if what I brought up is gonna be incorporated or not. Were you gonna try to incorporate some of those things?
What, um...
The...
At this point, the ones that I had incorporated, that I had the notes on were the grandfathered subdivision signs and sort of the grandfathering of all the signs, changing the max display surface to be whatever it is. We'll give you the options on that. Adding some language saying that the, the need for a written agreement with the city about new subdivision signs is not intended to apply to those that already exist. And adding a definition of display surface, and I had banners, should be allowed. Was there any other?
Okay, banners were not allowed. We decided not to do that. That, the thing about the Christmas lights, that really needs to be changed.
I, I would actually agree. I think that, I think that one...
Fifty-eight dash twenty-five, two and five need to be taken out.
So, just, just for clarification, what we've done is we repeal all of the current code and then we add, we went through every single one of these and there was discussions on them and it was either decided to leave it out or re-add it. One of the ones that was re-added mentions that billboard signs, billboards aren't allowed, grandfathering's still there, inflatable signs, tether balloons, pennants, portable signs, which has a specific definition, and strings of light not permanently mounted to a rigid background. Some of those are actually, some of those need to be removed. I'd say string of lights, inflatable signs, which are your inflatable Santa. Anyways, I, so I'd recommend amending that and I can do that and give y'all a good draft. And I, I mean, I think that's important enough to be included. Otherwise, we're just creating an inconsistency.
And we can either talk about it next time, but I still think there, I think there's confusion as to whether temporary signs are authorized signs or not. And I think, I think they need to be added as an authorized sign.
Without a building permit is the way...
That, that was intended, but isn't there, and I think was, can be clarified and added back in absent, unless anyone objects. Okay?
All right, I'm good for now. Thank you.
I'm sorry. No, there are, there's no categories of political signs?
Temporary sign, yeah.
Unless it's permanent.
Unless it's permanent.
Make a motion to vote.
All right. We have a motion in a second to revise the, have the city attorney revise the ordinance with the items we just discussed. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all of us in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay, this will be back on first reading. So, we may get to spend all year on this thing.
Chicken? It's chicken-esque.
Yeah.
It's better than chicken, though.
All right. Next item is under new business. We have resolution number 2017-02, authorizing the sale of real property owned by the city of Maumell. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Maumell, Plasca County, Arkansas, resolution number 2017-2, authorizing the mayor to sell approximately .37 acres of real property owned by the city of Maumell.
Okay, I added some paperwork at y'all's desk. Part of the problem was, is I was at the municipal league conference when the packet was going out and all that and I didn't have all these documents either, didn't have access to them. So, I added a couple to your package that gives you a better description of what's going on on this. The city purchased right-of-way from Mr. Stephen M. Mr. Stephen M. owns 40 acres and we took two point something acres of his property for right-of-way. But there was a triangular piece of property that was on the north side of the roadway that we weren't taking for right-of-way, but he didn't want to retain because it was of .37 acres that was separated now from the rest of his 20 or 38 acres, 37 acres and plus some change. So, he said, "You gotta buy that too in order to buy the right-of-way." That triangular piece of property attaches to, and I assume it's the White Oak Equestrian Center LLC. Is that the ownership, Dr. Haas? Okay, so it attaches to the White Oak Equestrian Center LLC and also included a copy of the subdivision plat that is before, the preliminary plat that is before the planning commission for the month of January. And you can see the layout of the subdivision that Dr. Haas is proposing to do on his property. And so, there's a roadway to connect to Council Massey that goes through that triangular piece of property. And so, Dr. Haas then made an offer, the, the property, when it was, when we were doing the right-of-way acquisitions, the property was valued at $13,750 per acre per an appraisal that was done at that time, which was in 2015. The .37 acres would be valued at $5,087.50 and Dr. Haas has offered to pay the city $6,000 and take care of all the closing costs and the surveys that need to be done for that triangular piece of property. And then he'll, if the subdivision is built and he builds a roadway, he would then dedicate a part of that property back to the city of Maumell as right-of-way. So, he's a very generous man. So, but it's, it's not property that the city could use to develop anything. I mean, .37 acres would not be big enough to develop anything and probably barely meets the requirements of a residential lot if you get technical about it. So, so that's why I think it's advisable to proceed on with the sale of the property. But it's up to the council. Since it's real property, the council has to make that decision.
Motion to approve resolution 2017-02?
Second.
It's a motion and second to approve resolution now 2017-02. Is there a discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, just as a clarification, okay, this is, this is the, the current plat that's before the planning commission. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Sure, going through the triangle because I'd seen, I'd seen another plat where it looked like the main entrance to that subdivision would go up around those other lots and kind of into the middle of it. Was that the old way? Okay, so I saw the old way and had that in my mind. All right, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. And Dr. Haas and Mr. Eric Holloway are in the, Dr. David Haas and Mr. Eric Holloway were in the office, audience tonight to answer any questions if anybody had any. So, appreciate them coming, sitting through a lot of discussions.
Sign ordinance.
I messed up. I said, "How close are we on the agenda?" "Oh, you're, you're right up at the top. It's no big deal. They'll not..." All right, you guys step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I can reach it. Alexis Williams, Lexington Park, 7633 Vestal Boulevard. I was wondering with that $6,000, where does it go from there? Like, once that's sold?
Goes into the city's general fund.
General fund. Do you then, may I pardon my lack of knowledge about it, do you then like reinvest that for community building activities?
No, ma'am.
We can't. It's the general fund.
Oh, okay.
It goes into the general fund, which will have expenditures for community events or community center or, so it just goes back into the account from which the city pays its bills.
For everything.
It could play for police protection, fire protection. It could go to purchase other land if there was land available that needed to be purchased for something, but it could be used for any city purpose at that point in time.
Okay, and then I assume you have like a separate budget meeting for that sometime in the year?
Well...
We have several budget meetings.
We have several budget meetings. We had four last fall and we just approved this 2017 budget in December.
Okay.
And the budget is a little over $12 million in the general fund.
So, $6,000 is nothing?
Yeah.
Well, it's $6,000. And sometimes we get down to $6,000, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next item is mayor's comments. I provided a Facebook post basically for y'all, sanitation employees help out resident. And I hope y'all looked at that. It basically says, "A special shout-out to sanitation employees, Dwayne, Casey, and Michael. They were making their rounds this morning just as I locked myself out of the house with snow on the ground and I'm in my robe and slippers. They were able to unlock the door and get me back inside in record time. Thanks, guys." So, we were, we were, that was Friday, January the 6th, the day we had the little bit of snow we had in Maumell and they were out running their route and a citizen needed help and she didn't even have to call the fire department or the police department. The sanitation employees took care of it. And Sam's upset now.
We wouldn't.
And then that leads to the next item, snow conditions recap of January 6th, 2017. We actually brought crews in at 3:00 a.m. in the morning to get ready because it had started snowing pretty good at that point in time. And we held them till 6:00 p.m. that day. We were supposed to get another wave of snow in the afternoon. It never really materialized here in Maumell, but it was not enough snow to plow because we have to run with the plows just slightly above the surface of the asphalt and it just, we couldn't get them low enough to pick anything up. So, all we could really do was put sand and salt on the roadways. And we went to the intersections and then after we took care of the major intersections on Maumell Boulevard, we hit some of the hills and things like that. But by noon, a lot of the streets had melted off just due to sheer heat in the ground. But the, the boulevard and Odoms had gotten packed down through all the traffic. So, we had to continue to put salt and sand on them. We had about five accidents during that morning around 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. Three of those occurred on Odom North near Maumell Boulevard. As you come down a hill and the road slopes to the right, they wound off basically rolling off or sliding off in the ditches. And then we had two different wrecks at Carnahan and Maumell Boulevard about an hour apart. It, just people couldn't stop at the intersection and cause damages there. But not a major event, but there were still some activity that we had to do with public works and try to take care of things. But to the best of my knowledge, it was fairly uneventful as far as there wasn't any injuries in any of those accidents. And we didn't have any major incidents anywhere in Maumell. And then basically the, the other item I have is the Arkansas Municipal League. We just got through with the winter conference. It was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week. And again, I'd like to commend the city of Maumell because they earned the 2016 Volunteer Community of the Year. And it's given to, by the office of Governor Asa Hutchinson, DHS Division of Community Service and Nonprofit Support, the Arkansas Municipal League for Excellence in Voluntarism, January 2017. And so, this will be put up in the community center along with some of our other plaques that we've earned. And I want to thank Ms. Courtney Dunn because she does all the paperwork that allows us to, to qualify for that award. Now, the, the work is done actually by the volunteers too, to build up the hours so that we can earn that award. But Courtney takes a lot of, or takes, it takes a lot of time to get those hours put together and everything and, because it's sometimes hard to get that information, but it's, it's worth the effort. And so, I think this is the, and I don't know the exact number, somewhere around a dozen, right, Courtney? So, the times we've won the award, so. And then the only thing, it's not on my agenda, but we need a liaison for the planning commission for January the 26th. The Alderman that had that day cannot be there. So, if somebody's willing to step up, and you don't have to let us know tonight, but if you'd let Madam City Clerk know that, I will not... Clerk know that, uh, I will not be able to attend that, so, uh, I won't be able to do it, uh, but if somebody's able to step up, we sure would appreciate it. So it'll be a week from Thursday.
Uh, I can't commit, because I think I'm going to be out of town, but if I'm around, I'll go to it, because I did, and part of that sub...
I have a fallback plan too, but I hadn't talked to that person yet, so, yeah. He's got to attend the meeting anyways, so, that's just what I'm saying, all right.
That's just what I'm saying.
Next item is planning commission report, and that will follow the planning commission meeting. Any aldermen's comments? Alderman Mosley?
I just, I see where we have a planning commission appointment, uh, and we're taking the applications. What seat, whose seat are we looking?
It's Mr. Todd's seat, it's...
Mr. Todd, seems like we just had him about a year ago.
Well, about four years ago, I believe, yeah. And it's, we would normally have two, but the, that position, I believe it's position one, is that correct? So position one comes up only one planning commission members, because there's a odd number of planning commissioners. The rest of them will be two appointments at every year after that, so two and three, then, three, uh, four, two and three, then four and five, and then six and seven would be appointed.
Is he running, is Mr. Todd running again?
He is running again, yes. He has already turned in an application, so...
That's all I've got, thank you.
Yeah, even if they choose to re-up, we have to advertise, so that we can see if we can get other applicants. Any aldermen's comments? Mr. City Attorney?
Couple of things, at the Arkansas Municipal League Conference, I was very sad to see we had no new certified municipal officials and no recertified officials. Um, I stress the, the, the educational opportunities, I know that we had a good turnout at the last conference. Um, and then for continuing credits, there's classes throughout the year. If you're not being notified about them, um, if you could just let one of us know, we can make sure you get notified. I think, uh, Madam City Clerk's pretty good at that. Um, the next thing is, uh, I just wanted to give you all an update on lawsuits, the O'Leary lawsuit is set for, what I'm hoping is the final hearing next Monday at one thirty PM in Judge Gray's office, that's at the Plaski County Circuit Courthouse. For anyone who wants to be really bored, or is really nerdy and interested in what's going on there, it is my hope that that'll be the last hearing, the result will be that the case is dismissed and we go on. It could be ruled against the city at that hearing, or it could be somehow pushed off for a trial date. Um, and so that's Monday at one thirty. If anyone's interested in going, and I don't blame you, if everyone says no, let me know and I'll give you more information. With regard to, there's been a lot of movement on the Mosley lawsuit, um, I'd meant to update y'all at the last council meeting, but the court denied the plaintiff's, uh, temporary, motion for a temporary injunction stopping the city from enforcing its fence ordinance. Uh, there's since been an out, answer and a counterclaim filed, um, and, uh, we've received the first interrogatories, second interrogatories, first request for production, motion to dismiss the counterclaim, and a motion to strike the counterclaim, all recently, so, I think that covers the litigation news. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
I have nothing.
Okay, uh, before we adjourn, just need to remind you, if you hadn't already turned them in, your statements of financial interest are due, uh, by January thirty-first. So I know a lot of people have already turned those in, so just giving you a reminder. If there's no other business to come for the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Meeting is adjourned.
Hey Tina?
Yeah?
I'll bring this over to you tomorrow, I forgot one section, I don't know it off the top of my head.